Good evening, everyone. It's 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the July 8th, 2019 Fairfield City Council Meeting to order. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Toohill?
Here.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Here.
Before we start tonight, I'd like to take a moment of silence for Mayor Malloy and his family during this very difficult time. Thank you. Are there any additions or changes to the evening agenda? Hearing none. Oh, do you have one?
We've got Alex here to speak for McClure.
Okay, we have one public appearance. Alex Potter, McClure Engineering, will give us a wastewater treatment plan update. All right, before that, let's do our consent agenda. We've got the approval of the minutes from the June 24th, 2019 council meeting with an amendment.
Mm-hmm.
The amendment is that Doug Flornoy was in fact present-
Yes.
-at that meeting. So, note that amendment. Approval of the June 28th, 2019 payroll in the amount of $142,865.69. Approval of the July 5th, 2019 special payroll in the amount of $9,354.19. Approval of the general obligation debt in the amount of $13,125. Approval of the USDA Step 1 debt in the amount of $12,975. Approval of the CoBank interim financing debt in the amount of $42,336.52. Approval of a park use permit for World Fairfield International Festival. This is for a noise exemption. I believe they're going to have public music until 11:30.
I think so.
Is that correct? Approval of two liquor licenses, one for Kokomos by Mike and Nikki, and the other is the Bookhouse Fairfield. Approval of total claims in the amount of $662,205.16, with one claim exceeding $75,000 as drish construction, $193,939.51. Any questions on any of that? If not, I'll hear a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion, the second. Any discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
All right, Alex, you can come and give us your wastewater treatment plan update.
Yeah, so it's been a while, probably too long since I've given you the last update, but now that construction is definitely in full swing this summer, thought we'd come by and kind of talk to you as we start to turn a few of the processes on at the wastewater plant. So bear with me, I'm just going to kind of walk through every process at the plant and then come back and touch on the overall schedule. So the Influent Pump Station, Influent Stormwater Pump Station, we started that up a couple of weeks ago. The screw pumps and the big stormwater pumps tested very well, and basically just working on punch list items in that building right now, so that's probably the farthest along of any of the processes. The Headworks Building is mostly complete, all of the equipment is installed, and all the electrical is basically complete. The equipment, some of the equipment, including the grit removal system, is going to be tested, I think, later this week, and the mechanical screen startup is going to be a little bit ways down the road as we're waiting for the non-potable water pump station to be completed for that. But related to those two buildings, we are working with Melanie and other contractors and French Reniker to attempt to coordinate the tie-in of the Step 1 project, which I think is tentatively scheduled for the 16th. So as of then, we should be able to take water at least through the new sewer, all the way through the Influent Stormwater Pumping Building, through the Headworks Building, and into the oxidation ditches as kind of a temporary measure until the downstream part of the plant is turned on. Then back to the downstream part of the plant, the oxidation ditch splitter structure is essentially complete. The contractor's going to pour a knockout wall this week, and that structure will be done and dusted. Oxidation ditch number three, we are continuing installing air piping in the jet mixing equipment as well as handrail. Other than that, concrete filling, backfilling, has a lot to do with kind of the weather that we've had over the last month or so, and it's starting to dry out, so hopefully we'll have that done in the next couple of weeks. According to the contractor's last schedule, that process will be complete early August. Once oxidation ditch 3 is complete, that will allow the contractor to begin bypassing either oxidation ditch number 1 or oxidation ditch number 2, so those can be brought down. During that time, they will start working on the renovations for those two ditches in sequential order. Right now, that's work is scheduled for September and October. Unfortunately, the extent of those renovations are really unknown until we draw down the oxidation ditches. So hopefully we'll have some more information about that here in about a month. The oxidation ditch blower building is largely complete. There's a few minor electrical items that are getting wrapped up, but on track to be done so that oxidation ditch 3 can be turned on, as I mentioned, in early August. Aerobic digester number 2, again largely complete. A few pieces of electrical sensors and conduit is being installed this week, and they have completion scheduled really for that new tank on July 18th. After that, then we'll work with staff to transfer sludge from the existing tank into the new tank and do the renovations in the existing tank. The UV disinfection system is probably the least far along of any of the processes. The contractor right now is anticipating concrete work through the middle of August. Following that, we'll have electrical work, handrail, gates, equipment installation, and the non-potable water pump station through probably the month of September, and then startup scheduled early October for the UV disinfection system. The control building and lab is really coming along. The new lab is basically ready to use. I believe the contractor's doing a little bit of wrap-up work in there this week, and in the city, we'll be able to move out of the old lab into the new lab. Once they do that, the contractor will be able to start the renovations in the old lab, cover to get into the locker room, and men's and women's locker rooms. And completion of kind of the control building renovations, assuming all goes well, is the end of August. We have the lower EQ basin. The earthwork, I think, is hopefully going to begin this week to start demolishing the dike between the two lower EQ cells to make that storage space a little bit larger. And then lastly, kind of the miscellaneous site work items. So right now, PKG is installing 10-inch air piping from the oxidation ditch blower building to oxidation ditch 3. Once that's complete, they will work on doing the air piping to the other two ditches as that kind of renovation process kicks off. They're also starting to grade the golf course storage reservoir. That little area is kind of some bad soil over there, so that was delayed a little bit because of the weather. Once the golf course storage reservoir is graded, they intend to move toward kind of the front half of the plant and work a lot on the site grading near the Influent Stormwater Pumping Building and the Headworks Building. So with that, I kind of covered all of the processes, but in general, the contractor's given us a schedule that suggests they're going to be complete around the end of October, so we're hopeful that we have good weather and things come together to make that happen. So that's really where we're at in terms of the project. So a little bit kind of behind where we would like to be, but we started the project kind of almost a full construction season late, so they really have made a lot of good progress, I think, over the past year or so.
All right, thank you, Alex, for your complete report. Any questions, council? So I have one question.
Sure.
Would you say potentially October would be a time to do a ribbon cutting or a toilet paper cutting?
Yeah, so I was going to bring that up. We would love to do ribbon cutting with you guys. It just depends on whether we're complete, complete in October, and I'm not sure that you guys want to have a ribbon cutting in the winter. So I think we just kind of play that by ear, but I think we'll work with you in whether it's, you know, late this fall, or first thing next spring is that weather starts to turn. We'd love to have a ribbon cutting.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing, yes, I usually talk about the budget at these things, but in terms of the budget, we're still about half a million dollars under the budget, and we haven't touched any of the contingency funds on the project yet, so things are still looking really good in that regard.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we're moving on to resolutions, action items, and ordinances. Our first action item is a consideration of an engagement letter with Piper Jaffray. So this is part of our $825,000 borrow?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And then Piper Jaffray did the calling and setting up of the borrow, so that's kind of the paperwork trail for that.
All right, so before we can actually borrow the funds, we need to complete this action item and accept this consideration of engagement letter.
So moved.
Moved by Thompson?
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That was an aye. All right, thank you. Next item, resolution. This is the considering directing the acceptance of a proposal to purchase $825,000 in general obligation capital loan notes. I'll let Aaron talk about this.
The actual borrow is going to end up being $775,000 with net proceeds of $752,937.50, so it's actually going to give us about $3,000 extra for contingencies or anything like that. Piper Jaffray reached out to 60 national, regional, and local institutions. They received five, or 10 feedback from 10 different institutions, five official proposals, only one local bank sent back an official proposal. Interest rates came in favorably. They were proposing an average of about 2.5%. Our low percentage rate was 2.28%, and the high was 3.4%. Washington State was the only one that, a local bank, and they ended up coming in at fourth place at 2.73%, and which would cost us about $18,000 more in interest expenses. The lowest proposal came in from Zion's Bank, Salt Lake City, Utah, at 2.28%, and this loan can be repaid at any time. There's a fee schedule that he sent, but I don't have it with me. The top four was Zion's Bank with 2.28%. Key government finance was 2.43%, and that's out of Denver. The US Bancor out of Denver also was 2.605%. Washington State was 2.73%, and then First National Bank out of Fishers, Indiana, was 3.4%.
So First Internet Bank?
Oh, Internet, I'm sorry. First day of reading again.
That's right.
In a week. So Piper Jaffray's recommendation, along with the finance staff, would recommend that we approve Zion's Bank and the $775,000 note.
And just to remind council and the public, this is for the downtown street lighting improvements, the airport runways, and the boiler at the library.
Yep. Do we have any sort of detail on whether they can turn around and sell the note? Like, a lot of times when you do a large borrow, a bank will put its name on it, then turn around and sell it. I mean, in the detail, there's no chance this interest rate's going to go up. It's locked, right?
Yes, it's locked.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a fixed interest rate.
Yep.
No penalty for prepayment, which is excellent. Any other discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Toohill. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you. Next item, action item, consideration to award the contract of the proposed Monroe Avenue Improvement Project. Do we have somebody?
Steve.
Steve Hausner, perhaps, or Melanie? Steve Hausner from French Reniker Associates will speak on this. I heard we had a good favorable bid on this one, came in under engineer's estimate.
Yeah, I got the 30-second update from Matt Walker, who is actually the project manager on this. So you recently opened bids, looks like July 3rd at 11:00 AM. Our engineer's estimate was $133,000 for the project, for the construction of the project, and Jones Contracting Corp. was $121,777. There were, looks like there were three contractors, including Jones, that bid the project with the PCC alternative, and there was one contractor that bid the project with the HMA alternative, but the low bid was $121,777 by Jones Contracting.
Steve, could you read the name of the company and the bid amount for the other bids, please?
Yes, yes. DC Concrete out of Dowd's, Iowa, was the second low bidder at $129,284.25. And Wesley Barton Construction out of Mount Pleasant was the third low bidder at $133,595,040. And Norris Asphalt bid the HMA alternative, and they were $132,698.25.
All right, thank you. All right, council, so as per our policy, we accept the low bid of the most, of the reputable company, and Jones Contracting is that company, so is there a motion to approve the contract with Jones Contracting Corporation?
Still moved.
Moved by Anderson?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Next action item, considerate, consideration of amending the Number 2 Engineering Service Agreement with French Reniker for the sanitary conveyance sewer from manholes 17-1A, 17-37, near Lamson Woods. Melanie, can you help us out here?
Yes, I'll let Steve go over the details of the agreement in a moment, but the purpose of this amendment is to do additional design and putting together a change order package for work associated with the line that went through the golf course. So Step 1 went from Lamson, the treatment plant to Lamson Woods. Step 2 is going to go from Lamson Woods to MUM, and what we call Step 1 and 1/2 went through the golf course and just past D Street. And it was always planned that there was going to be a handful of items that the city was going to have to do when the system was ready to use. Some of the old pipes had to physically be removed in order to put the new pipes in. You can't do that until the new pipes are ready to be used, which, as we talked about, will be early next week. And then on the funding side of things, so Step 1 and 1 and 1/2 were funded by USDA loan and grant, and the grant fund is our used last. And at this moment, with the, any remaining work that's currently under contract, we have around $400,000 left. And so because that's grant money, it's a use it or lose it situation. $270,000 of that $400,000 is being used for the City Hall remodel project, because that's required by USDA, which leaves us about $125,000 that we needed to find a sewer purpose for. And so we said, well, let's do this work that the city thought we were going to have to do in-house. Let's talk to Langman, who is the contractor for Step 1 and 1/2, see if he would do it as a change order. We've talked with John Morrissey and USDA, and they're in favor of doing this as a change order to use this last little bit. But, so the first step is to have French Reniker draw some more details so that Langman can provide a change order. The hope or intent is that we would have Langman's change order price to you at your next council meeting, so that they can do the work in August and get all of the funds used before the end of September, when the grant funds are gone. That's a long story, but that is how we got to this point and where the funding's coming from. So Steve can talk about the amendment specifically.
Okay, so the amendment to our engineering contract will include designs, drawings, and specifications for the following work. Connect two service laterals to the new sewer, sanitary sewer. Abandon plug, abandon and/or plug existing manholes 4-4, 4-5, 4-6, 4-7, 8, 9, 10, 4-11, and 710, which I believe most of these, if not all, are through the golf course or just west of D Street. Remove and replace manhole 711, which is a little bit, it's clear on the west and west of D Street. We're still kind of in the design process to see if that manhole actually needs replaced or just something modified on it to connect into it. Construct approximately 43 feet of 10-inch sanitary sewer from manhole on the golf course 12 to manhole 71. That's along D Street, so that'd be about roughly 50 feet of D Street's going to have to be tore back up. And that's, again, to transfer the sewer flows from the old sewer to the new sewer, where it crosses D Street. Construct approximately 134 feet of 30-inch sanitary sewer. That's to make the final connection at the west end of this project. And replace manhole 711, again, that's kind of in the air right at the moment. And plug several manholes. These are down just north of Highway 34. They're outside of the area Henniges worked on. However, if we, if you don't do anything, you're going to, the old sewer line is going to collect groundwater and dump it down to your new treatment plant. So if, we need to abandon those four manholes, and we'll put, I guess you could call it, for lack of a better term, an overflow. It'll just be groundwater that would dump out into the creek, ultimately Crow Creek. So it's going to turn into a big tile line, basically. And then we'll prepare, so that's the scope of the work. We'll prepare a change order number 5 documents, including bid items with quantities, perform engineering during construction and construction observation for the construction of that above-described work, and then prepare record drawings and closeout documents. So for that, the total amendment amount for this amendment is $19,230, which brings your RD agreement, engineering agreement, to $636,830.
Thank you.
So are there any questions?
So my understanding, based on what Melanie was saying, was the city was prepared to do this work anyway with their own funds, so by moving forward, we're not entirely sure we'll get the grant funds, but we're pretty certain?
We already have the grant funds.
Okay, or there's a deadline involved, and we're pretty certain we'll do the work in time to utilize the grant funds? Okay.
Yeah, at least half of this work was noted on the drawings as to be done by owner.
Okay.
So we're just changing who's going to do it.
Changing order, all right. Any other questions? Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the amendment to the Engineering Services Agreement with French Reniker?
So moved.
Moved by Thompson?
Second.
Second by Gandy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you. All right, so this is an item we've been hearing about, the elevator at the Carnegie Historical Museum. Looks like we're ready to consider a proposal by Schumacher?
Schumacher.
Schumacher?
Schumacher.
Schumacher. Thank you. Schumacher Elevator Company. Melanie, can you take it away?
Yeah, another item that requires a little bit of explanation to go with it. The contract that you have in front of you is for an amount of $70,69,000 with two add alternates that would bring the total contract to $83,482. Jason, if you open the funding source item, so first I'll say that this project was not bid in the traditional sense, but we did receive two independent quotes, one from Schumacher and one from Kone. The Kone one that we were given about a year and a half ago was around $100,000, which is why we have elected to go with the Schumacher and have gotten a more recent proposal from them. As far as funding sources, or, sorry, as far as the total costs that are in this, we have the code updates, which are going to, are required with state law that goes into effect January 1. Then there's some additional work to update the mechanical parts of the electrical, or the mechanical parts of the elevator. They're not broken, but they don't have a lot of useful life. So we said, while we're doing the work and shutting the elevator down to do the code updates, what is it going to take to bring some of this other stuff to a more usable level? And then there's the replace host weight doors and cab walls, which are the two add alternates. Then there is some electrical work that needs to be done, which is outside of the Schumacher proposal, as well as replacing the door to the mechanical room, which is also outside of the proposal. So the total cost that we're looking at is $90,152. As far as funding sources, Indian Hills Community College, per our lease agreement, they will pay half of the required updates. The city has designated lost from last, from this, no, last fiscal year as well as this current fiscal year. And then the Carnegie Foundation, through a couple different sources, is looking to pick up the rest. If the Carnegie, Carnegie Foundation tonight is actually meeting right now as whether they're going to do the two add alternates. So the motion that I would ask for you tonight is to approve up to $83,482. And then if the foundation decides not to do the add alternates, we can still proceed with the contract without bringing it back to you.
All right, thank you.
Will we hear from Jefferson County Foundation?
Not till August.
Not till August, okay.
Any other questions from Melanie? Is there a motion to accept the proposal from Schumacher Elevator Company for, oh, moved by Anderson?
Second.
Second by Gandy. All right.
For the 83.
For the 83, as Melanie stated.
Yeah, what was it exactly? Get it for the minutes?
If the $10,000 doesn't go in from the foundation, what will happen?
The add alternates will probably get dropped.
The add alternates, they, when we sign this agreement, it will likely be Christmas before Schumacher will do the work, which would give us time to remove the alternates or for the foundation to find, either do a campaign, or they, I know they have some funds that could be used for capital improvements. They'd like to save that money for the roof, but they do have some other options. So I would say maybe more accurately is $33,000 will come from the foundation, one way or another, whether it's their funds or Jefferson County Foundation funds.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you. All right, council, next three resolutions are tax abatement applications. First is for 2200 West Burlington, that's the Best Western. So when we approve these, we are not verifying the dollar amount, we are passing this on to the assessor's office to verify any improvement or any additional assessment value, and then a certain proportion of that is abated. So by approving it, we're just saying, yes, some work was done, and we'll pass this along to the assessor's office. So is there a motion to approve the tax abatement application for the Best Western?
So moved.
Moved by Thompson?
Second.
Second by Toohill. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Next, application for 707 South Main Street.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson?
Second.
Second by Gandy. All approved, or all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Third and final one is for 1203 South Main Street.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Anderson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you. All right, next five ordinance amendments are dealing with the various city fees. This was a, an action to bring them all online from the various departments. Some went up, some went down. I believe we used the DOT as a guide to set those. Melanie, do you remember which one had the amendment? Is there a typo in one of them you wanted to address?
Yes.
We have one more meeting after this, we can still.
77.
Okay, then it's not the first one, it's the second one. All right. So as per Iowa law, there's always a public hearing before any ordinance is considered. So we're going to open the public hearing now. Does anybody would like to speak on this ordinance? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, is there a motion to move this through the second reading?
So moved.
Moved by Thompson?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thompson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Anderson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes. Thank you. So ordinance 1177 has a slight typo we need to address.
Actually, there are two changes that I would like to make. The second page, Jason, section 5, paragraph G, we changed the his/her to owner's expense to clarify that even further. And then in section 6, paragraph A, it originally said, fourth line said amount not to exceed on $1,000.
Melanie, can you go back to that previous one?
Yes.
I think you have owner twice. I think we have owner twice.
It says that it will be maintained by the owner at the owner's expense.
Okay.
So yes, it says owner twice. Anyway, the typo in section 6, paragraph A, was it said on $1,000 rather than $1,000. So that's not even highlighted, because it was, the original ordinance, as we talked about the last time, anything in black is what's currently in the ordinance, the red is what we're changing, and the original ordinance said one, I just mistyped it when I typed it.
Okay.
That is all.
Thanks, Melanie. We're gonna open the public hearing for ordinance 1176, consideration of amending municipal code 14.04 miscellaneous water fees. Anybody like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, would you like to move this through the second reading?
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Thompson. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Anderson?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, ordinance 1178, same type of thing, this is for blocking streets and snow removal. Open the public hearing, is there any comment from the public on this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, would you like to move this through the second reading?
So moves.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes. Ordinance 1179, this is certain fees in municipal codes, too long to list, additional codes, more, it's all up there if you'd like to read it. Pretending to rental property, mobile home, parks, lodging houses, home occupations, and demolition permits. We'll open the public hearing. Is there any comment on this ordinance amendment? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your wish?
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Will you please call the roll, clerk?
Thompson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
One more, I promise. Ordinance 1180, this is considering the fees for fiber, fire service fees. Opening the public hearing, would anyone like to comment on the amended changes? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, would you like to move this through the second reading?
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thank you. John, do you have anything tonight in your city attorney report?
I do. I want to introduce the council to, if you'd step up, Wendy. Wendy Dixon, who I talked to you about a couple meetings ago. Wendy is living in Fairfield as of last year. She's an Iowa person through and through, she's been involved in finance and bank management for the last 10 to 12 years. Before that, she was in Georgia. She has an MBA in finance from Temple University. She has a law degree from Georgia State University, and she has about five years' experience in a law firm in the Atlanta, I don't know what to call it, Greater Metro.
Yeah.
So anyway, she comes with a pretty well-rounded background in finance, which should be very helpful to me, who has a lot of numbers in front of me and sometime looks a little befuddled. So she, so far I found her listening in on some of the conversations related to city situations, is already talking the talk, let's see. And I think we're going to probably benefit from her services almost immediately. Was talking with her today about some things that probably state revolving fund questions and USDA questions that I'm plugging along on. It's a good time to familiarize her with how that works, because we've still got years of that financing experience that we're going to be involved in to get our infrastructure the way we want it for the next couple generations. So I'll let Wendy speak to you, she will probably in the next term up to council meeting at the end of the month, be submitting a letter of representation proposal as far as her part-time services to the city. That's been generally talked over with you, but I want her to be familiar to you, I want her to have your ear and you will have her ear. She'll be over at the office, start with a little bit unpredictable, she's gonna be gone for a few days traveling, but then when she gets back, I expect that she'll be uptown most days, not necessarily full-time on any of those days, but she will be around doing things. I expect that she'll be along to court and eventually involving in the confrontation occasionally. Anyway, she got a good baptism on that. We had Julie Harvey and the chief out on a man who started yelling about shooting and had a pistol in his pickup, and they resolved the situation very quickly and handily by the quick action of the police. And there happened to be a sheriff's deputy that was driving to the court also, so. But that kind of exposure has probably not happened very often in my career, but anyway, that was a baptism for her as far as being fresh on the scene and getting an idea of what can come. So anyway, that will become part of things that she's also doing around the office. And then she'll also be joining me as far as working on private cases, but anyway, I wanted to maybe say a few words about herself as far as what she anticipates. This probably over the next six months or so will be kind of trial and error as far as what we get into, which things she's handling, which things she seems to pick up on. She's really quite quick on anything that she's been handed so far, so.
Turning for cover at the magistrate's work.
Alright, I'll turn you over to Wendy.
Thanks, John. As John said, my name's Wendy Dixon, I know a few of you from around town, and I'm a fourth-generation farmer here in Iowa, I've always considered Iowa home. My great-grandfather has farmed in Van Buren County, and my grandfather, and my father, and now myself and my children. So I moved back to Iowa in 2010 to work over at our family-owned bank in Downs, and it's public knowledge now that that bank is being sold outside of our family. So I'm expanding my wings now and practicing law. I've been a licensed attorney for quite a few years in Georgia and now in Iowa. In Iowa, I was a member of the bar in 2010 on. My main background, as John said, is in finance, I work for JP Morgan Chase, B&amp;W Mellon in the wealth management and real estate area, and practiced law and did estate planning and such on the side. So once my kids went off to school in Iowa City, I decided that Fairfield was a nicer place for a gal like me to live. So I've lived here a couple of years and recently bought a home over by the golf course and enjoy working here in Fairfield. So again, looking to practice law, and I feel like this taps into some of my experience, and looking forward to learn more about the municipal practices that John is an expert in, and look forward to working with all of you. I tend to be very responsive, very customer-focused, and since you'd be my customers, and the city my customers. So I can be available and just look to learn and expand my knowledge, and under-promise and over-deliver, I guess is the best thing to say. So I'm happy to vent any questions about my background, or?
I could personally vouch for how tough Wendy is, because she and I have been working out together at Boom Fitness for quite a few years now, and so.
CrossFit forever.
Yeah, so she's tough as nails.
That's right, I didn't even say, I just passed my CrossFit certification, that should be like top of my resume, right?
There you go, yeah. Well, welcome, Wendy.
Thank you.
Very much look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
We have one committee report, Public Safety Transportation met this evening at 6:30. Three items for council consideration. Proposed Gear Avenue speed limit changes, I think we're gonna bring that to council a little bit more formally than Melanie, could be, maybe work something up that's a little bit more professional than my diagram for the council to consider next meeting. Okay, so we'll bring that to you at the next meeting. We have a consideration to add a streetlight at the intersection of 9th Street and Burlington Avenue, so this is the intersection, the city wanted grant to upgrade the pedestrian crossings. Some photographs taken at night indicated the west side is rather dark, and that is actually the location where the gentleman was struck and killed by a vehicle. So we wanna add some lighting to that area. Lion Energy typically charges us $2,000 to put a light on an existing pole, and that's what this would be. We do have a TIF that covers improvements on that, in that intersection. Actually, we're gonna propose to use the TIF funds for a match for the grant, so we can keep the funds in our sidewalk fund. So this would be paid for additionally by the TIF funds. So we don't have an exact dollar amount, if the council prefers to wait until the next meeting, then we do, we can do that. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve installing an additional streetlight on the west side of the Burlington and 9th intersection.
So moved.
Moved by Toohill.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Thank you. And the last item was a request for a street closure, the Depot Brewery would like to close Depot Avenue from 5th to 4th Street on July 25th. They wanna have a little outdoor entertainment, they're not gonna sell anything, so they're not an official RagBrite vendor, but they just wanna have this outdoor area on the old brick Depot Avenue. And our fire chief and police chief both said, not concerned about that being closed down, it's not a high-use street, so they're okay with it. Now, this would not be an outdoor beverage area, and that was made clear to the Depot Brewery that this would not be a place they would sell or serve alcohol. So the alcohol would be served inside where their liquor license currently resides, and they would just have some live music in the street. So committee's bringing this as a recommendation to approve this street closure for just during the daytime hours, July 25th, I think they're gonna reopen it by midnight that evening. Is that correct? Yeah.
So moved.
Motion by Anderson?
Second.
Second by Gandy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Thank you. And the last update is a RagBrite update, could you please click the link? Thank you, Jason. So this is an updated map of our downtown. I wanna go over very quickly, if you look at the, the emergency shelter symbols, I wanna go over, our emergency plan includes four downtown areas that are emergency shelters. So if we get into any trouble with the weather, we will send our people into the convention center, the VFW, the community center formerly known as the senior center, and the Elks Building. Additionally, for our, for street closures, we just wanna make it clear, Briggs Avenue is gonna be closed essentially between 2nd and B, so most of that will be closed, that's where RagBrite sets up their merch. And obviously, we're gonna close down the rest of that space. Now, we do need to consider an action to allow that to be closed on the 24th, which we will do at our next council meeting, so we'll probably consider that our next Public Safety Transportation Committee meeting. But the wastewater crew is handling the installation of the kibos or the porta-pots, and they wanted to install those preferably at 5 o'clock on the day preceding RagBrite. So that'd be Wednesday evening. They did not formally make that request, so we're not ready for that consideration, but just wanted to plant that, that idea. The dash lines and the little bus symbols are the downtown bus stops, and there are three routes, we went over this before, one for the east, one for the south, one for the west. Real quickly, just wanna name the emergency shelters for the rest of the camping areas, for the fairgrounds, it's the Ag Building, for the park and rec yard, it's the Park and Rec Building, and then the school, so Pence will use the school building, the middle school as well, Obie Nelson will use the middle school, Wilson Park will use Washington School, as will the Washington School campers, high school will use the building, and Chautauqua Park will use the high school. So those are our emergency shelters in case of bad weather, and something we take very seriously. Obviously, we hope for beautiful, not-too-hot, clear day, but just in case, we're prepared. Any questions on any of that? Alright, our final item. Sorry, did I forget you?
Yeah, it's just, it's not always on there.
It's not, go ahead.
Katie brought up, asked a question about codification. I have been in touch with Jennifer Moville from Simmer &amp; Corey, she's been sending some things, but she asked, had a list of two or three different things that needed addressed, so those have been sent back to her. I'm not exactly sure how far we are along with that codification process, but we've been sending stuff back and forth, so that process is going along. The streetlight project, Mr. Wizer was supposed to send me a invoice so that we could pay, prepay for some of the equipment that was gonna be used for the streetlight project. He did not send me an invoice as of today, so it's not, didn't get paid today. So I hope that doesn't slow our project down, but I'm gonna have a sneaking suspicion it will. Also, I've had a couple concerned citizens request, wondering why we're changing streetlights out, referring more to whether or not we're putting streetlights in so that 5G could go in on those poles. Just if you get questions or concerns, make sure you let them know the reason we're changing streetlights is because those green streetlights are, their bases are rotting out and need to be replaced. So just information if you get addressed for that, so, for the future. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Aaron. Alright, our last item is just an announcement. City Hall is most likely going to be closed to the public on Thursday, July 18th, and Friday, July 19th, as part of the mandatory upgrades, ADA compliant upgrades, so they'll be doing some work, I assume, in the entryway? Yeah, so two days, we will not be open to the public. Still, phones will be on.
Dropbox in the alley.
Dropbox in the alley, so those will be accessible, but we'll make another announcement as the date gets closer to verify. Yes.
Well, we won't have another council meeting before then.
But it'll be on the city website, Facebook page, et cetera. Alright.
Michael, can I add one thing at the end?
Sure.
I just wanna put Chief Thomas on the spot, and see how the calls were this 4th of July under the new ordinance.
The usual.
No improvement.
A lot of complaints, and unfortunately, I don't know, it's from monitoring or just by the time we got there, they were gone, we were unable to locate many of them. But it seemed to be better than the first couple of years.
Okay.
Not as many calls, probably five to 10 a day as opposed to 20 or 30 a day. Ma'am?
Okay, that's an improvement.
Yes, definitely.
And there were fewer licenses for sales this year, both across the state and here in Fairfield. And that's pretty typical for other states that legalize. You see, first year, there's a lot of excitement, a lot of pent-up interest, second year, actually you'll see more licenses as people try to cash in, and then year three and after, it kinda settles down. But I did notice it seemed subjectively less obnoxious this year.
Yes, sir, there were less, definitely less complaints, so our assumption is- Yes, sir, there were less, definitely less complaints, so our assumption is there was less activity. And night shift said the same thing, they didn't hear as many fireworks coming off, especially after 11:00 PM, even when the ordinance allowed it.
Sorry. Thank you. Anything else?
Just curious.
Good question.
We were on the table.
Oh, you were here at the very beginning, but come on up, talk about your, your event. We already approved the.
Oh, you did?
Yes, we approved the, the noisiness late into the night, 11:30 to be exact.
All right, well, then I can give you a little parting piece of shit.
We're very quick, you got to come early if you want to.
I live, I live 10 minutes out of town.
Thank you. All right, so Denise Rush, she's with the Fairfield Cultural Alliance, who is spearheading the World Fairfield International Festival, Saturday, September 14th. Take it away, Denise.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm glad to hear that you passed us the noise abatement situation, and remind people that this is going to happen. It'll be September 14th. We're going to run from noon, noon until, officially until 10:00 PM, but sometimes it goes a little late with the musicians taking down and all of that stuff, too. It was really well-received last year, we had about 600 people in attendance and hope for more this year because we've had more time to plan and do some marketing. But it will also involve a parade from, a foot parade from, on the sidewalk from Farmers Market.
Howard Park.
Howard Park, Howard Park up to the square and around with people in colorful costumes and music happening. And that will start at the day of music for free, of all kinds of international acts. Plus, we have country tables, mostly people from, who live here, from other cultures, either way in the past or in the, in their present time, put together country exhibits about their areas. And they, we have small prizes for beauty and authenticity of these tables. And we're going to have, again this year, an international baking contest, which is getting to be kind of popular, too. Anybody can submit a recipe and get it judged by three local food experts. And, and the music is, also employs quite, quite a few of our local musicians, and some of the musicians beyond Fairfield, too, in southeastern Iowa and up to, as well as Des Moines. Thank you for approving that. We're going to close off one lane of Main Street that's closest to the square, and some of the parking spots along, I'm sorry, that was Broadway Avenue that we're going to close up. And some of the parking slots along Court Street to accommodate food vendors and picnic tables and things like that. So everybody is invited. You'll hear more about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. If there's not any additional anything, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Toohill.
Second.
Second by Thompson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, everyone.